Good evening and welcome to the Punta Valley Board of Education Business/Work Session of June 7th, 2018. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whenever there are a lot of students in the audience, I love. I know we're gonna have a fun meeting. So without any further ado, our first presentation?
Yes, our first presentation this evening is the 5th Grade Middle School Collaborative Project. We have students here. We have Ms. Dreeson, Ms. Summers, Ms. Summer, and Ms. Sousa with their students to demonstrate their work in collaborative education.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. We're very excited to share with you a lot of what we've been doing in the classroom. Thank you to our parents in the audience and also to the parents who brought our student ambassadors here for us today. My name is Kathryn Dreeson. I teach 5th graders ELA and Social Studies.
Hello, I'm Georgia Summer. I am the 5th Grade ICT Collaborative Counterpart. So I work with Kathryn for ELA and Social Studies and I also collaborate with Zoe Sousa for Math and Science. And today we are so fortunate to have the opportunity to share with you about one of our favorite classroom instructional tools called Flipgrid. And the students have found this to be a really powerful tool in our classroom and they're really going to share the story of how we have used Flipgrid tonight with you. So if you want to introduce yourselves. And so Flipgrid is a video response platform and we are going to share some ways that we've implemented Flipgrid in our classroom in a moment. But before we do so, I really felt an urge to include a penalty in here with the words all around the head because we absolutely loved Flipgrid. It really has transformed our learning this year.
Grids. A grid is your classroom or community of learners. Grids house your topics. Topics are your discussion starters or prompts. Students respond to the topics.
Responses. These are the students' videos they record or upload and add to the topic. This is how they share their voice. Replies. When activated, replies take the discussion one step further by allowing users to add a response or reply to a response that was added to the topic.
So one thing we want to highlight is that Flipgrid is compatible with all devices. So in our classroom, we primarily use Flipgrid on Chromebooks. However, you can also access Flipgrid on a desktop computer, on a laptop, on an iPad, on a tablet. You can also access it on your phone. And we have quite a few students in our class that have downloaded the app on their personal phone so that way they can access this at home, in the car, anytime. And now it's time for us to share with you a few different ways that we've used Flipgrid this year. So first Bella will share about character selfies.
For character selfie, we use Flipgrid to share our ideas on a book that we read called Magician's Nephew and we used it to share our work.
And this is one of the replies.
I like the details in your picture.
Sam.
Another topic we did was math mania and one of the problems we did was would you rather the volume of a pool? So you would choose between forty feet by nine feet by four feet or by seven feet by four feet by two yards. And then you would find the answer to that. And then you would add a reply and solve the problem, say your answer, and explain your answer.
Oh, hi. So I-
And then I would be replied and we picked which one we did and we explained our answer.
So in our classroom, we did a project called Sustainable Shark Tank. So we came up with our problem that day and then we made a Flipgrid video of the, like, what our problem is and where does it occur and when did it occur?
So our problem is that there.
And then I, um, we just answered to our problem and then posted it on Flipgrid.
Another, um, like, wait, what's his name? Oh, yeah, topic is the homework help board. So the homework help board is basically if you need help on your homework or like you find a tricky question, you can post a response and a teacher or a student can reply and basically help the person who is stuck on the problem.
So I need help and number five in the Eureka-
Hayden, I'm so glad that you posted and asked for help with this question. Number five of the Eureka problem set six. It's a doozy. So let's get going. Let's- So one thing, I'm just gonna interject for a quick second there since we did share that video of Ms. Summer at home.
So-
Part of the reason that- Hayden, we love using Flipgrid for homework help. This is honestly, I would say probably, one of the most powerful ways that we've used Flipgrid this year is because it really has, especially for math, relieved Mrs. Sousa and myself from answering so many of the same questions day after day. And what's wonderful is we can walk the students through a guided tutorial as you can see here with the models. And you can stop and you can pause and you can ask them questions to make sure that they're really processing and thinking about it as well. And then students the next day might ask us, oh, I also was struggling on question five in module two, problem set three. And we could then direct them over to check out that homework help board. But what's really powerful is when we have students actually responding to each other's questions, which you will see we have had many a time. So this is a tool that we hope to start to expand using that homework help board and that's the type of thing when the kids have it on their phone, they're able to access this at any time. Oh, yes. I'll click on the slide. There we go.
So in our classroom, we have a Flipgrid pod which you get in and you record in it and no one like sees what you're recording or can hear you. So you don't have to worry about people walking behind you getting in your video or people around you talking and like getting in the way of all your videos.
This is our Flipgrid emoji reaction guide. When you hit the heart, you like their response. When you click the light bulb, you're saying wow, you had a great idea. When you click the thinking man, you're saying hmm, your response really got me thinking. When you hit the rocket, you're saying your response was out of this world. I really liked it. You had great ideas and you got me thinking. And then when you click mic drop, you say boom, drop the mic and walk away. Your response had everything needed and more. You responded to the topic flawlessly. The video quality and sound was perfect.
So as you can see, Flipgrid has what I would say is somewhat akin to Snapchat or Instagram features with the liking system. So I would say in some ways, it's an educational, like, social media-esque tool that is very powerful and really resonates with a lot of our students this day and age. Okay, I will get there, but if you want to, I think you're next.
So Flipgrid is constantly monitored by a teacher and we use it as an assessment tool. We use it to also check in with students. So we can take a quick assessment of, so if I was working on standards, I can determine the theme of a text by thinking about details in the text. In their response, I'm looking that they supported those, their answer to the prompt with those details. Can also see that they can summarize a text. They can build on others' ideas so we can see our speaking and listening standards here, as well as they can share their ideas because they've come to the discussion prepared. Before they open up their Flipgrid, they are to, required to jot down some notes, have complete sentences so that way their response is ready to go. So for example, to assess these standards, here was our prompt. We needed to tell about a book that you've read this quarter that you would recommend to a friend or a classmate to read. Be sure to give enough details to entice someone to read it, but not so many that you spoil the ending. So we were encouraging and supporting independent reading here. And this prompt would stay up for, I teach two sections of ELA, so both of my sections of classes could talk to each other and then have these at home. Oh, I need a book to read. Where can I go to? So also building those relationships and connections between the classrooms. Another- So another example of how I might assess certain standards is share your character selfie. So the character selfie that Bella shared, the question was, how is the character feeling at this point in the story? So I'm assessing that they are seeing how characters respond to challenges along with the theme, that go with the theme of the story. What is the setting of that selfie picture? What's the caption? So I can also assess their understanding as well as their speaking skills and their discussion, um, their discussion skills with each other.
So in our integrated co-talk classroom, Flipgrid has been a really powerful tool to break barriers of many kinds. So to break down learning barriers and also to break the physical confines of our classroom wall. So what I mean about the latter of that is that we have also engaged in a virtual PENPAL program called GridPals. And that has allowed us to connect with other 5th grade students across the country, in the states of Georgia, upstate New York, and of Kansas. So how that works is students actually are presented with a prompt in all of those different classrooms and they get to respond and they get to interact with each other virtually. And those responses are all moderated by Mrs. Dreeson, myself, Mrs. Sousa, as well as our partner teachers in those other schools. And that's something that we have had, I would say, a lot of fun with, meeting some other 5th graders around the country and developing some of those global citizenship skills as well. But with regards to breaking barriers to learning, specifically with regards to writing, writing can be difficult to teach. It can be very taxing for a lot of our students. And what this has allowed those students to do that especially struggle with writing is express themselves in another modality. So using a video platform to also communicate to us that they have the same comprehension and understanding of a prompt rather than that act of physically producing that reply in written form. It's exciting. Would you say it's exciting? It's engaging? And I would even go so far as to say that this is an empowering tool in our classroom. We've had a lot of fun, a lot of laughs with Flipgrid. You can be silly with the stickers and it really lets their personalities shine through. So thank you.
Can we ask a couple of questions maybe? Sure. We have the students here. For any of the students who feel like, what camera do you use? Do you use the camera in your computer or your phone or a separate camera? Which cam, which, which one do most people use or?
Uh, we use the camera in our Chromebooks. We use the camera in the computer.
In the computer?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, so that can hook right up. Thanks.
So what's your favorite thing to do on Flipgrid? I know we saw lots of different examples for how it's being used in your classroom. What do you think is your favorite way to use it?
Being funny.
Uh, stickers that you can put on the thumbnail.
So I can provide a little bit of background information for how we got here. So I have a habit of sometimes crashing building level faculty meetings and I did one day at the middle school. And when I meandered in after the meeting had started, there was a presentation beginning and Ms. Summer and Ms. Dreeson were actually presenting this with their star student presenters in front of them today. And this is a program I know pretty well and I've seen used at many different grade levels. In fact, last month, we had a 2nd grade classroom talk about how they were using Flipgrid. But when I heard the students speak about how many different ways they were using it and features and tools that existed within the program that I never knew existed, I was really impressed. In fact, I cornered the poor teachers during the faculty meeting and asked them if they'd be willing to come here and present it. But I think it's important to note that the students aren't learning how to use a tool. The students are using a tool to express what they've learned in class. And I think the teachers have done a fabulous job of making sure the learning is still about the content and that the technology is simply used as an avenue for them to present their findings and their research and their opinions in a way that's engaging for their peers. So I compliment you all on a fabulous job and thank you for coming to present to us.
So we're going to have a presentation in a moment on the Mandarin Chinese program and hear from our students who have taken that program this year. It's a first in our district. But in some ways, what we're going to see is something similar in that what we're trying to embrace in our schools and engender in our schools is student voice. And that is what is going to take our students to a successful accomplishment in their life is finding their voice and being able to use it effectively. So this Flipgrid technology is a way to extend a student voice because you have a tool to help you do that. And ultimately, that voice will be used for advocacy, to ensure that a student feels empowered and able to speak their mind. So we have students coming today now who are going to be showing us what they've learned in their Mandarin Chinese course in one year. Uh, this is their final presentation for the year that they do for their teacher. And Mr. McCarty, do you want to introduce further?
So good evening, everyone. My name is Travis McCarty. I have the pleasure and privilege of being the principal of Punta Valley Middle School. And here to present this evening are a few of our Mandarin Chinese students along with our teaching assistant in the classroom who is so vital to our program, Ms. Lynn Sharp. And they are led every day by, through a synchronous way where somebody at Orange Ulster Bosse's, Mrs. Ping Maroney, calls in and is live on the screen. And these students embark in a 40-minute period on a daily basis and interact with her through media. And Ms. Lynn Sharp gets to walk around the classroom, work closely with the students, and helps this program to be as successful as it is today. And this just started for us in September. And next year, we have a cohort of around 20 that will be starting in 7th grade. So this will continue from 7th grade to 8th grade through high school. And with us this evening are three of our Mandarin Chinese students. Why don't y'all come up? Come on up, Lynn.
Hey, I'm Lynn Sharp. I'm the teaching assistant in the room. And our first student is Ava, Ava McGinty.
And could we just explain that this is a final presentation where they talk about their families, themselves, their schools? It's a way for them to demonstrate their knowledge of the language in a way that's personal.
Yeah, so you'll see through the presentations, they've all made it very personal. They have pictures of their family and they will speak in Mandarin Chinese as well as translate it for you in English. Well, thank you for that.
Um, my name is Ava McGinty and this is my family project.
You need to bring that down a little. There you go.
So this is my family project.
我的家，my family. 爱发，Ava. 我叫爱发，my name is Ava. 我是，是，三岁，I am thirteen years old. 我家有五个人，my family has five people. 我是一个爸爸，I have one dad. 我是一个妈妈，I have one ma. 我是一个弟弟，I have one younger brother. 我是一个姐姐，I have one older sister. 我不是哥哥和妹妹，I don't have an older brother or younger sister. 我爸爸是十，十八岁，my dad is forty-eight years old. 我妈妈是十，十岁，my mom is forty-four years old. 我姐姐是十七岁，my sister is seventeen years old. 我是四十三岁，I am thirteen years old. 我弟弟是十二岁，my brother is twelve years old. 我是Irish人，I am Irish. 我是美国人，I am American. 我姐姐弟弟和我是学生，my older sister, younger brother, and I are all students. 我爱我的家，I love my family. 我，你，爱我，they love me.
That took four years of high school Spanish and my pronunciation isn't that good? Thank you very much. Our next student is Gigi Cartag- Cartagui, sorry.
我的家，my family. 我的英文名字叫Giovanna Cartaggi. My English name is Giovanna Cartaggi. My Chinese name is Giovanna. 我是中学生，我是二岁，I am a 7th to 12th grade student. I am twelve years old. 我是意大利人，也是学生和欧洲人，I am Italian, Peruvian, and Uruguayan. 我的爸爸是十七岁，my father is forty-seven years old. 我的妈妈是十五岁，my mother is forty-five years old. 我是十二岁，I am twelve years old. 我的弟弟是十一，my little brother is ten years old. 我有爷爷奶奶外婆外公，I have a mother, a grandmother and grandfather on my dad's side and a grandmother and grandfather on my mother's side. 我没有哥哥和姐姐和妹妹，I do not have an older brother, an older sister, or a younger sister. 我妈妈是GAP的经理，my mother is a senior director at GAP. 我爸爸是数据分析师，my father is a data analyst. 我狗是二岁，my dog is two years old. 我狗是狮子，my dog is a shi tzu. 我爱我的家，I love my family. 我的家人很好，my family is great. 我有爸爸妈妈和弟弟，I have a dad, mom, and little brother. 我爱我的家，他们也爱我，I love my family and they love me too.
Our next presenter is Michael Fitzmaurice.
我的家，my family. 非 Michael而住，by Michael Fitzmaurice. 我，我的英文名字叫Michael Fitzmaurice. My English name is Michael Fitzmaurice. My Chinese name is非Michael. 我是二岁，I am twelve years old. 我是美国人，I am American. 我的家，我的家有四个人，my family has four people. 我有爸爸，我有妈妈，我有弟弟，我有我，I have a father, a mother, a brother, and me. My brother, my younger brother's English name is Zachary Fitzmaurice. 我的弟弟十岁，你是赵如生，my younger brother is ten years old. He is in, he is in grades one through six. 我的爸爸，my dad. 我的爸爸英文名字叫Matthew Fitzmaurice. My dad's English name is Matthew Fitzmaurice. 我的爸爸是十三岁，my dad is forty-three years old. 我的爸爸是商人，my dad is a businessman. 我的妈妈，my mother. 我的妈妈英文名字叫Sarah Fitzmaurice. My mother's English name is Sarah Fitzmaurice. 我的妈妈是十岁，my mother is forty-four years old. 我爱我的家，I love my family. 我的家人也爱我，my family loves me too. 再见，goodbye.
So I received some coaching, so I'm gonna try it. 谢谢? Is that thank you? Was I close? 谢谢.
谢谢.
How did you type the presentation?
There's a program on our laptops on Google Docs and it allows you to type in the Pinyin or like the English for it and the character will pop up and you can type it in.
Great, that's unbelievably good. Congratulations.
My laptop is different. In the settings, you can set it so that you can type in different languages. So you type in the Pinyin and then you can choose between the characters that match with that Pinyin.
Pinyin is the English, using the English letters and then it'll type it into Mandarin. We're very, very proud of you. You're our pioneers in this program. And I've been in the classroom and I've been amazed at the conversations that you have with one another. And I think we can all agree that you have both a remarkable Chinese teacher, who is Ms. Maroni, but also an unbelievable teaching assistant in Ms. Sharp, who has really been a coach and a supporter of the students throughout. And this program only works because you have a community of learners. I, when I heard these presentations about a week or so ago, I was just, I was amazed because this is just a year, 40 minutes a day, you know, doing a lot of homework, but it is so different. It is such a different language from ours in every possible way. And to see what these students have accomplished, it just reminds us that high expectations are okay. Kids can rise to this occasion. They can aspire. They can accomplish. And they're, is it a good feeling to be able to do this?
Yeah.
It is. It's a great feeling when you've done something that's difficult and you're able to accomplish it. And, and we are so proud. I, I said, "We have to bring this to the board so that they understand that when they supported this program, which was new, it's always a risk when you do something new." And the board, and I have to thank the board for their willingness to enter into something that is new, it's different, it's innovative. And it's been amazingly successful for these students to be able to reach out and branch out to something that will be a lifelong, this will have lifelong promise to them. This world today is a very small world in that we know that there will be opportunities for them to have different interactions with, with people who speak Chinese in the world. And they will be able to enter into that world and very successfully because they've started at this age. So we're happy to be able to do this. This is what we're about. But the board was supportive of doing this and this is why we have this program today. And we've had visitors from other districts coming to see what we're doing. And we're very fortunate to have a board that is willing to do this kind of thing. So thank you to the board.
And Dr. Wills, I'm glad you mentioned risk-taking. These students are not unfamiliar to some of us. Gigi and Michael might not remember, but I did their spelling bees when they were in the spelling bee finals and they were willing to take a risk then. Ava is not fearful of stage and performing in any way. And I think they really are pioneers, so they were able to take a risk. You're gonna, you know, learn Chinese in a room with a television. I don't know if that would have been something that would have been inspiring to a lot of people, but all three of them took that risk and showed that they can have fun and learn something and hopefully role-model that for their students. So it really does more than just learn Mandarin. It's talking about jumping in, trying something new because eventually this is how learning's gonna happen and you're gonna be on the forefront of that. So I am so proud of all three of you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarty, I have a question for you. The continuation of the program as, as people's, new students come in at the beginning level and students move on, what is the, I mean, I know you're probably still not finished schedules for next year, but how many students are continuing to year two out of the initial cohort?
So right now we have approximately 22 students in the class. They will all be continuing. And we have 20 signed up coming in next year as 7th graders.
Great.
And we do, we have a night where we actually have kind of like an orientation where Judy English came out and spoke about the program. And actually, some of these young pioneers came out for the evening and spoke about what it's like. And what's nice is you see siblings seeing success and their younger brothers or sisters coming into the program. So that just shows you the investment the families are taking into account and we hope to grow that and continue it. Dr. Wills and I, when we sat down initially, we were hoping for about 10 students to start this. And when it kept rising up into the twenties, we were a little nervous about the room size, but ideally if we can keep it around 20 students, that would be great. And again, it is a rigorous program and it will be continued throughout the high school as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
So is the plan that this will be their, their primary language? Or they will also have the option for Spanish or French as well?
Yes, when they get to the high school, that's when they can, you know, if they feel that this, they'd like to start another language, they could drop this language or continue this language. We hope they'll continue it. We hope that we will have them go through and there is a, an exit exam that they can take. We're hoping that it'll be part of the IB process. But they also could take another language. I mean, they could start Spanish, they could start French. That's, that's open to them as well.
And, and we've built the resources in to handle the number of students that will continue to be in the middle school next year. But the following year, we'll have the resources in the space to be able to do that in the high school.
Exactly. And the Orange Ulster Bowses has really created something very special in this program. They have a cadre of teachers, which, you know, if you went out now to find a Chinese teacher, it'd be very, very difficult to find a Mandarin teacher. Because, you know, in order to find a certified teacher. And they have developed this cadre. And the teacher they have is, is remarkable. Ms. Maroni is an artist, she's a painter, so she's very creative and does creative things with them. She sends them brushes so they can do the writing, the calligraphy. And she, she comes to have lunch with them during the year, during Chinese New Year and celebrates with them. She has built relationships with these students. She's there, it's synchronous, right Lynn? I mean, am I, I'm on the right track?
It's like she's right in the room.
It's like she's right in the room. She is...
She hears everything too.
She hears, she's animated. She has developed activities that are really engaging. And it's, it's a very, very special opportunity for students who want to participate. Next, our next presenter is Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman has been, he is our AIS teacher for our elementary, but he is also a coordinator of the math program in the elementary grades up through grade five. And this year, we started a, what we call a challenge program, which allows students to go to the next level, whatever their ability is in math, whatever progress they've made, they're allowed to go to the next level. And we've created a program that we think is very exciting because we have differentiated in different ways in the classroom and this is a way to differentiate by looking at ability and giving that student, wherever they are, the opportunity to stretch and be challenged.
You did a great job. Thank you. Again, I'm Mick Coleman and I've created with the help of Dan, a video that really represents the, the program.
And I did ask that they put this video together because I want to be able to show this also on the Town channel. Because this is the kind of thing that is creative and innovative and we'd like our community to know what we're doing here in these areas.
And like this program has developed into where the 4th graders are supporting the 1st graders, it's really a community effort here. Good evening Board of Ed and community members. My name is Mick Coleman and I'm really excited about sharing with you the new Math Challenge Program we have here at the elementary school. Come on in. In thinking about this program, I wanted to find a theme or project that would support the curriculums from 1st grade to 4th grade. And through my research, I found Piet Mondrian, a Dutch abstract artist that fit this criteria. So if you were in 1st grade, you would be learning about geometric shapes, rectangles and squares, horizontal and vertical lines. In 2nd grade, we would go a little bit deeper. We would have the kids find the rows and the columns of the particular rectangular or square shapes to find the area. If you were in 3rd grade, we'd go a little bit deeper. You'd use mathematical tools such as a ruler to measure the sidelines to find the area. And in 4th grade, again, you would find the area of the particular shapes and then you would find the perimeter of those shapes. Now I'd like to have a few students come in and speak to you about their experience with this program.
Hi, I'm Peyton Ferraguzzi and I'm gonna tell you all about the history of Piet Mondrian. Piet Mondrian was born March 7th, 1872. He went to college at the Royal Academy of Arts, where he studied there to be an art teacher. After he graduated, he then decided to be a painter and we're all so happy he did. Piet Mondrian died in 1944 at the age of 71.
Hi, my name is Lily and I researched the Broadway Boogie Woogie. Broadway Boogie Woogie was one of Piet Mondrian's last paintings. He uses vertical and horizontal lines. He also uses primary colors such as blue, yellow, red, and gray.
Hi, my name is Eliana Broccalo. Piet Mondrian painted one, many paintings. One of his paintings was Composition A. Composition A was made of parallel and perpendicular lines that formed right angles, horizontal and vertical lines that formed squares and rectangles. He painted this painting using red, blue, and yellow, the primary colors, and gray lac. This painting went on display at Tate Mondrian, 1935, and it was sold for $50 million.
Hi, I'm Caitlin and this is the New York City picture that Mondrian painted. The New York City picture is a start of the, of a new style. There are no more black lines and no more squares or triangles of primary color, only lines of primary color. These lines could represent roads or subways in New York City.
Thank you, girls. After a number of classroom lessons and studying each of the individual pieces of art and the mathematical principles behind those pieces of art, we had each of the students develop their own original Mondrian piece of artwork. So I don't know if you noticed that throughout the video, that there were different sites we were at. That the whole challenge didn't occur in my classroom. The, we used the entire school building as a classroom. Prior to this program starting, I put up posters of, of his paintings all over the building to really catch the students, like, "What is this? Mr. Coleman, what is this? Tell us what it is. Why is this up here?" About a month before, really to get the, you know, the energy about the program that we were about to do. And I gotta tell you, the students, Margaret, and, and the teachers really got it behind this and it's a fine program. Any questions? Now mind you, these are students that are from 1st grade to 4th grade. So they were using T-squares to make these straight lines and then they had to individually paint all these and glue on the, like, the...
And all along they're doing the math that goes along with this? That's crazy.
And it's amazing to hear like 1st graders, horizontal lines, vertical lines. And as we were walking through the hallways that first time, we would stop at one of the paintings and I would ask the kids, "Look at it. What do you, you know, just reflect on it. Look at it. What's it about?" And you, you would have, there were no right answers. There was a freedom there that in, you know, in math, you're gonna have one right answer. There was a freedom there that there was a lot of right answers. And the challenges we do in class, there's not just one right answer. There's a number of ways to achieve this, an answer. In 3rd grade, what they're doing in some of the classes, the challenges that they're doing, they're having the kids create restaurants. So they have to come up and research the cost of products to create menus, to create floor plans for a restaurant. In 4th grade, I ran the New York City Marathon and the New York City Half Marathon and the challenge for the students was to find out how many feet did I run? So now they have to research how many feet are in a mile, how many miles are in the marathon, and come up a way to figure out how many feet I ran.
I'm so glad you didn't ask them. What was the time difference between Mr. Coleman and Ms. Dougherty in the half marathon?
And they can figure out that difference.
It was great fun, huh?
That's great.
So my first question was, I wanted to know if you had a Mondrian t-shirt laying around in your drawer somewhere?
I have two of them I purchased.
You went out and purchased that specific for us? I was very impressed by that. Do you just wanna provide a little bit of context behind the program in general and how this came about?
Oh, do you want me to?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yes. Well, we sat down together and we were coming up with...
No, yes, just about the Math Challenge in general.
Okay. All right. So it occurs each, each week on Mondays and it is for grades one through four. And the students were placed in, with particular teachers and we used multiple measurements for that. Eye-ready, classroom performance, classroom assessment, how they were doing. And our goal was to just reach a little bit further on the ability of the student, to challenge them at the level that they're at. And the kids love it. The kids love it.
So I just wanna commend Mr. Coleman for not only being sort of a visionary along with, along with Ms. Podesta for this program, but not only does he facilitate his own group, but he works very closely with each of the grade-level teachers to make sure that they have activities to challenge the students that are before them. Mr. Coleman has had the opportunity to see every student in every grade level during the challenge block, but he certainly has put some thought and effort into what every student is doing during that period of time through his work with the teachers. So I certainly wanna commend him for not only the projects he's doing with the students he sees, but for all of the work he's done with his colleagues to ensure that all students are challenged regardless of what level they're at in math during this period of time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, I just would like to say that the principal is here, Ms. Podesta, and we also have Ms. Coleman, who is a teaching assistant with us, was an art teacher. Has also, well, his sister is an art teacher and has also been very interested in art. I know Mick is interested in art. And just the fact that we are able to have teachers who think differently, who are willing, again, to take the risk to do something that is different and that we will support them in that, our students gain tremendously from those experiences. And this was an original idea, it was a visionary idea, and students are excited about learning and that's what we really are about, trying to get kids excited and engaged with their learning. And, you know, we have begun to see the results of the kind of effort that Mr. Coleman... of the kind of effort that Mr. Coleman has made to help teachers in their educational process of teaching math. He goes into the classroom and teaches with them, showing them how to teach particular concepts. This is really a very dedicated, one of our dedicated teachers that we have in the school district. We have many. We're very fortunate and we're excited that he presented this evening to show us one of these really incredible ways that we're challenging students. So thank you.
You know, a theme I'm seeing, Dr. Wills, is the use of videoing the kids. Last week, we did the reading when they talked about their reading or the last board meeting. All three presenters today, the flip grid, they're developing into incredible public speakers. You know, what we call annoying selfie takers, you know, the generation, they're actually, we're using that to teach poise. I mean, your presenter is always there. I should be on the stage. To teach poise, confidence, projecting. So it's really doing more than just sharing the information. It's building those skills.
Confidence.
Absolutely.
So next, we have Mr. McCarty to talk about the new middle school schedule and the way he envisions the middle school, principal.
Alright, so good evening, everyone. So I'm here to speak about our 2018-2019 schedule at Putnam Valley Middle School. And I'm going to present to you what is, in essence, a block format moving forward at the middle school. And I'm going to talk about some of the advantages and with the program in a true middle school model. And I want to stress that because a number of years ago, there was a transition of the middle school from a junior high model, which was more departmentalized, to a middle school model. And I feel like we're finally truly going back to that middle school model. Okay, so one of the first things you're going to notice is our fifth grade doesn't change greatly, but with a couple of small changes, we're able to block certain areas of the day for our students. And this is also going to be reflective in sixth grade, which is going back to three pods or partner teams. And I'll talk a little bit about the benefit of doing that at the end, but first I want to talk about the logistics. So with both fifth grade and sixth grade, we have hour blocks, 60 minutes of ELA and math every single day. Now, this is a great benefit in sixth grade because the model that we have used for the last several years has been 40 minutes of math every day. So essentially, students were coming from fifth grade, where they got 60 minutes every day, to sixth grade, where they went down to 40 minutes. So this gives us an hour block of both ELA and math for both fifth grade and sixth grade. In addition, we now are going to be able to take our science and social studies classes and rather than having 40 minutes of science every day, we're going to have 80 minutes of science every other day. And the same thing with social studies. Instead of 40 minutes every day, it's going to be 80 minutes every other day. And you say, "Well, what's the benefit of doing that?" Well, we don't have the transition between the classes, so it's not a factory model. After 40 minutes, they get up and switch. They actually have that 80 minutes of time for science where they can dive deeply into a lab. They don't have to say, "Pick up your belongings. We'll continue this lab tomorrow." You can spend the first 10 minutes, five to 10 minutes of class, getting your lab materials, starting the lab, writing up the lab, reflecting on the lab and then putting the materials away in a true 80-minute block period. And we're hopeful and ecstatic to really see the benefits of what that looks like. Encore classes in fifth and sixth grade are still going to be 40 minutes. And up here, you'll see a little bit of a change from what was presented earlier in the year with some of our encore options of art, digital citizenship, family and consumer science in fifth grade, health and technology. Sixth grade looks a little bit different with art, family and consumer sciences, that's the old home ec. That's our new lingo. First aid and safety, health and technology. And a little bit of a change as well is we have 40 minutes of intervention and enrichment every day. We're used to calling that time period "skills." We like intervention and enrichment because we're stretching those and providing extra supports for those who need it. Still 40 minutes lunch and recess, split halfway, 20 minutes of each. And our specials are going to stay at 40 minutes, band course and PE. So really, the big difference in fifth grade is rather than 40 minutes of social studies and science every day, we're blocking it to 80 minutes every other day to get that longer period of seat time to dive deep. And in sixth grade, very excited, going back to that, building relationships of smaller pods with two teachers that are really going to get to know those students and build relationships and really dive more deeply into the work that they're doing. You know, we talk a lot about the transition. When do we go to that model of switching more often? And we're going to see that change go back up to seventh grade, where it's been at the sixth grade for the past few years. And I think we're going to see what we're striving for, which is making those connections with students and teachers. Seventh and eighth grade is where we see quite a change. Teachers are used to 40 minutes, 40 minutes, 40 minutes, 40 minutes. We're blocking virtually everything. We're blocking ELA, foreign language, math, science, social studies and encores. And these are going to be on two days of the four-day rotation. So for instance, a student may have on an A day and a C day, ELA, foreign language and math, along with their encores and specials. On a B and D day, they might have math, science, I'm sorry, yeah. Science, social studies and encores. So it is a rotation, but we feel like it's a good amount of time to dive deep into the work and then they come back to it two days later. And we're going to be providing support for teachers in changing this curriculum mapping to really dive deep into the work that they're doing. Encores that are going to be offered in seventh grade are Capstone, which is a research-based program. That's going to be a two-year venture. They're going to start it as a seventh grader and continue it as an eighth grader. It's given students choice on what they want to research and we have a wonderful teacher who's done a lot of research who's going to be leading that program. Digital citizenship, health, sustainability and technology. And then in eighth grade, art, capstone, criminology, drama, health and technology. And in our intervention and enrichment period is going to be 40 minutes, lunch and recess, still 40 minutes. And our specials will stay at 40 minutes for band, course and PE. So I want to give you a visual of what this looks like on paper.
Thank you.
So we have a period zero next year that I'm very excited for and we've been trying to weave more time into this period because it's so special. This is going to be our advisory period. We have a committee getting together over the summer to build a curriculum for this. And this is going to be our one book, one school. We did Augie and Me and Wonder this year. And we're going to have icebreaker activities. And what's going to happen is the entire school is going to be divided up with all staff members. So I could have a group of 10 to 12 students that works with me for the first 23 minutes of the day. Our nurse could have a group of students, our secretaries, our teaching assistants, our teachers, of course. And it's really to build relationships. We could go over how well they're doing in school, looking at their grades. We could, again, do our one book school, one book, one school. We could journal. This is really, there's a lot of options and opportunities. And what's nice is we're talking about a later start time for the high school next year. This essentially, we don't start our core periods until 8:13. So the students are expected to be in the building at 7:50, but that first time of the morning, you know, when the kids are really starting to wake up and go through the hallways, 23 minutes working in a small group with somebody that really cares about what they're doing and building those relationships with them is vital. Then you're going to see each grade level and it's blocked. If you'll see up there like grade five, you'll notice period two has the ELA math. That's split. It's an hour of ELA and an hour of math to better understand that. What's kind of neat as well, it helps us more systematically inside, is look at the progressive lunch periods. So fifth graders will start their lunch at 10:25. They're used to starting it at 10:10. So we're moving them a little later in the day, but we go fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth. So the eighth grade will be eating the latest in the day. Fifth grade's earliest and it just helps us internally as well. So that kind of outlines what our schedule looks like. And really, you'll notice the encores are still 40 minutes for fifth and sixth graders, but they do go to blocks and they're color-coded there. They do go to blocks for seventh and eighth graders. This is just another visual for you. Fifth grade teachers, sixth grade teachers, seventh grade teachers and eighth grade teachers. And now I want to talk, I know I've talked a little bit about the benefits, but here's what we're looking at. So our advisory period, zero, will be 23 minutes every day. Transitions, so I don't know if you noticed this, but we shaved a minute off of our transitions. So we don't have a large building. We actually have the smallest building out of the three schools. We had four minutes to transition. We're going to three minutes. So we're able to shave off a minute for each transition there. And don't worry, if students need to use or go somewhere, use restrooms or go somewhere, teachers will allow them. But three minutes to get to classes should be plenty of time. We're also talking about going to, since we have so many variations of the schedule in the school, we're either going back to no bells or bells in certain areas of the middle school. Because there's nothing worse than teaching an hour block and having a bell go off in the middle and interrupt learning. So we're going to run bells in certain classrooms so only those classrooms need to hear it to switch. We do have that capability. Or go no bells at all and expect teachers to hold students accountable for getting to and from where they need to be. Middle school ran on that for many, many, many years. And I would say it's only been the last, maybe eight to 10 years that we've had bells, but we do have the capability of running those bells in whatever classrooms we'd like. The other item that I want to point out is the flexibility within the 80-minute period. Teachers can provide an anticipatory set, a mini lesson, group work, independent practice, feedback. Students can start work and teachers get around to support them. So it's not like you get done with your lesson and you say, "Here's your homework. Check Google Classroom." You don't have the time to go over that with the students before they're gone out of your room. This will provide that time to really touch base with them. And the one thing that we don't notice here is because we have the 80-minute block, there used to be four minutes to get up and move from classroom to classroom. Now the teacher might take a brain break or allow students to use the restroom whenever they'd like throughout the period so that it's a little more fluid. So we're not losing that four minutes that we would normally lose by not having the block. So there's a lot to gain by moving to this and I'm sure if Guy were to sit down and punch all the numbers, you would see that we are gaining minutes of instruction in a sense through this by shaving off the one minute of transition time and by shaving off the transition that would have taken place if the block did not exist. We're really being able to dive more deeply with our students.
So that was a good segue. Sorry I interrupted real fast because I actually jotted those numbers down myself. So over the course of the year, I know having an 80-minute block and the difference between one 80-minute block every other day and two 40-minute blocks, one 40-minute block every day, doesn't seem like it would be any different. But for anyone who's a teacher knows that you spend the first five minutes of class getting the students situated, starting your due now, and then the last five minutes of class trying to do some sort of closing or an assessment, just by saving that 10 minutes of class each day over 180 days, which most years we don't have trouble getting to, that's 30 additional hours of instruction right there. Plus four-minute passing time over 180 days is another 12 hours of instructional time. So by simply making this switch, we're increasing our in-class instructional time by approximately 42 hours for each subject area for every student in the class.
Thank you, Dr. Luft. It's a win-win and our students benefiting from this will be unbelievable and I think getting their feedback through next year will be vital as well. And in an age where we are counting hours of the school day, this is very helpful in all that we do. And we are providing an opportunity for teachers to work on those curriculum maps over the summer because it is a shift from a 40-minute to an 80-minute period. So they'll have that opportunity to work together in developing those lessons and tweaking them to make them more impactful utilizing this time period. Any other questions?
I don't want to say I'm skeptical because I'm not skeptical. I'm delighted you've put an advisory period in. I was involved in schools, you know, 1990, I guess, or so, or 80, 90, when the move to the middle school model was created and the advisory period was the keystone, as you will, of the middle school model. All those hormones, all those emotions, the little boys and young men in the same five minutes needed someone to kind of connect with and that everybody in the school would have a go-to person. And I would say most middle schools have lost it because of the requirements, because of the needs, scheduling. And I think it's a shame and it really has taken a toll. So I will watch with bated breath how you were magically able to put it back because we shaved some of the other times and things like that. So I'm delighted. I think it's great.
I think what's important to note here as well is from a teacher's standpoint, we're still able to give all teachers a common professional time. So when other schools come to visit Putnam Valley Middle School, they always ask, "You have professional time every day for your teachers on the same grade level?" And for the most part, with exception of a couple of maybe encore teachers, we do. We have common planning time every single day for our grade levels. And that was a non-negotiable. That was something that was not going to go away because it's another cornerstone of what we do and why we collaborate so well.
I just want to acknowledge what a tremendous undertaking this is for a first-year principal and a first-year assistant principal. I believe, while sitting there discussing struggles with the existing schedule, that the comment was made, "Well, why not just create a new schedule?" And Nicole came in the next day, I'm not sure if she slept. She may have drank a gallon of coffee, drank a gallon of coffee. But she came in with like a conceptual framework for what a new schedule may look like with blocks. Now, there has been probably 100 revisions to that schedule and Travis and Nicole meet almost daily along with Deena and other representatives of the school to actually make this. I wasn't convinced until within the last two weeks that it was actually feasible. It was a great concept and every time we sort of cross one hurdle, someone annoyingly like myself would show up and say, "Well, what about this? Or we have to fix that." And they have risen to every challenge. They have found a solution to every problem. And I really think this new schedule will be fantastic for teachers and I think that the students will ultimately benefit from it. So I want to acknowledge that this is many, many, many hours. The reason why the schedule looked the same way it did when I was there 30 years ago is because it is a tremendous undertaking to make such drastic changes to a schedule. And two first people with their first year in their position have made that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I would be remiss to say, Ms. Nicole Mangieri... Thank you, and I would be remiss to say, Ms. Nicole Mangieri is a visionary in herself. My role is to provide feedback from a larger holistic view, who was under the model of the factory model of forty minutes. And when we do get thrown a curveball, she takes it and just goes home and says, this is how we're gonna figure it out. And it is. You've gotta visualize it on paper, because when you're starting from scratch, you've gotta build it. And, you know, we're gonna have feedback along the way, and that's how we grow. And again, I'd be remiss to say how much work she has put into this, along with Jeremy, myself, and Deena, but really, she doesn't take no for an answer, and I love that about her. And I just have to say, she is our cheerleader, and she is really proactive in making things work through challenges, and kudos to the great hard work that has been put into this all around.
And one added benefit, I'm sure you have thought of, but I know, I've worked in middle school, that we change our schedule as well differently, but all three grades have different schedules. Fifty-three minutes here, forty-two minutes there. It's a little bit different than this, I like this one better, but you don't have the whole school ever passing at the same time. So you don't take your life into your hands, having six hundred pre-adolescents and adolescents moving along at the same time, except for dismissal and arrival. And that just makes for a calmer, quieter building.
Also, I know, the advisory program is also structured.
It is.
And that's why you can have all the different members of the school community leading a group, because it is structured.
Yep, it's organic. The advisory program is being built from the ground up with teacher input, and that's what's so powerful about it, is when we start the day for twenty-three minutes, it's not like, oh, we have to do this. It's like, oh, we're doing this, it's our ideas. And that's what's so neat, is we take ideas from students, we take ideas from community members, we take ideas from teachers, and all that brought together to build this advisory makes it what it is. And when kids see videos of themselves up that we show during advisory, and we do activities that come from the kids, it really, it makes it all come together. And again, as Janine said, it's our cornerstone, it's what we're built around.
Is the advisory model, is the plan for that relationship to be consistent throughout the year as far as the person and the group that is part of that?
Right now, yes. We've had a bunch of ideas, but since this is our first year with this major change, we've thrown around quite a few ideas for the future, which might be, we build our advisory where the groups switch after a quarter, and that group of ten to twelve students sees a different adult for ten weeks, and we rotate it through four different adults. We've also talked about, and I've gotten feedback from teachers from years ago, who have been in the building for twenty-some years, when Marge Holderman was here many years ago, that, you know, when you work it vertically with fifth through eighth graders, sometimes it can be a little bit difficult because of the age difference and being in those groups of ten to twelve, but that idea has been out there. Also been an idea of maybe fifth and sixth graders together in a group of ten to twelve, and then seventh and eighth graders in a group. So we're gonna eventually move to that, but I think the feedback so far has been for teachers, can we stick with our grade level for now and then think about ways to expand it in the future? All right? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Do I have to do boring things like policies?
You know...
I've been talking about kids the whole time.
We're so fortunate that, you know, this is the end of the school year, and we're seeing the fruits of a lot of thinking. People in this district are doing a lot of thinking, and thinking for kids, with kids at the center, and so we've had that opportunity today. And it's good at the end of a school year to realize what has been accomplished, what kinds of vision, the kind of vision we have, what our administrators and teachers have been thinking about for our students. So, you know, I think these are the kinds of meetings that keep us inspired and make us realize the purpose and the meaning of what we do. So I wanna thank our principals, I wanna thank our teachers for bringing us all of this, this thinking. And from there, we, that's what we're trying to do with our students as well. We want them to be able to think and dream and create. So, on to a policy, which is actually a very important one. It's the first reading of the revised graduation standards, requirements, and ceremonies. Actually, this emerges from the Board of Regents in New York State, which has come up with pathways to graduation that are different than the traditional pathways. And they include a career development and occupational studies credential, a skills and achievement commencement credential, different ways for students to achieve a graduation, to achieve a diploma, other than what we have normally seen, which is the credits and the regents. And what this policy does, it memorializes in our district that we adhere to these new opportunities for students. Not all students who participate in a graduation ceremony have necessarily received a regents or local high school diploma, they may have another type of diploma, and they do have the right to continue in the school until they're twenty-one to attempt to achieve a regents diploma or a local high school diploma. And basically, we follow the regents' rules, and the superintendent does have discretion to provide a graduation, a diploma, to students who may not have reached what in the past has been a passing grade. It may be a different grade, but the student has taken the classes. They've taken the regents' classes, they've passed certain regents, like the English regents and the math regents. And so there are new opportunities, again, for students to achieve the diploma. They do, it does not mean that they cannot participate in graduation ceremonies, and we do have our students participating. And Natalie, maybe you can talk more about it.
Sure. We always have allowed our students to participate with the class that they would typically walk with if they've achieved these certain types of credentials. I think that the state has moved towards allowing students different pathways, where it was either a regents diploma or an IP diploma, and there was nothing in between. So this is really a great move, I think, on behalf of the state of New York, allowing students and valuing many students who might not have a traditional advanced regents diploma or regent diploma, but some more flexibility and allowing them to achieve a diploma that the rest of the world values, besides having opportunities and, you know, really requirements to be exposed to certain occupations and participating in those opportunities, such as, you know, whether it's HVAC or car mechanics, or LPN, or whatever the topic that the student likes, and they can even explore for a while. So it really values students who are just not on a, you know, a college-bound path. Might be on a different path, but a good one.
And when would this go into effect?
Well, this policy is, we really follow these rules right now. It's just that, we are following this, but we haven't memorialized it in a policy. We haven't revised our current policy, that's what we're doing now.
It's actually required now to have this in your policy. Where before, it was sort of optional, so it's now required.
So, I have a couple of questions. So the, I guess there's one on a student who's earned either C-DOS or a skills credential, if they're still working on it, if they have not yet completed the skills credential, but they're, but they're on the way, they're very close, and their ninth-grade cohort is graduating, that would be when they'd be allowed to walk.
Correct. Yes, they're allowed to walk with their class.
As long as they've fulfilled their requirements in occupational ed or in their skills or credential, they can come back after that to continue to achieve a regents diploma and/or do some job coaching.
But they would've had to actually earn the C-DOS for the skills.
Exactly. Students can walk, they don't necessarily get, they don't necessarily, they're not going to get a regents diploma. And we are, you know, we are flexible with our students. We're not going to keep them from walking with their class.
There's the...
If they have a few things to finish, that they could finish in August, for example, we wouldn't hold them back from walking.
Right. And I think it's important to recognize that they've achieved the certificate, they haven't achieved a diploma yet, and that's really the distinction.
Well, the number of pathways that have changed are diplomas. They're either a regents diploma or a high school or a local diploma at the discretion of the superintendent, all those, there's so many rules. But the C-DOS and the skills credential are not diplomas.
Correct.
They're credentials, they're certificates of completion. Right. So what we need to do as a community is make sure our employers know that someone...
And recognize those.
Recognize that someone who has a skills credential or a C-DOS has actually had about two hundred hours, a thousand hours...
Usually over two hundred.
Of vocational training, of academics related to the work world, and really are ready...
Ready.
To work. And we get nervous, because it isn't a high school diploma. But this is great, and I think this policy's clear. So this is the first reading.
Yes, that's all.
So, we'll have a second reading, and then we'll do a res- rest morning, next meeting, and then we'll do a resolution and adopt it as a policy. Okay. Terrific.
Student representatives aren't here.
We have no student representatives. I see PTA, PTSA.
Do we know who next year's representatives will be yet?
No, I don't.
Student representatives, okay.
I was just thinking, I wish I could've had one of the students do my presentation instead. It's hard following all those guys. My name is Christina Casey, I am the corresponding secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. We have a lot of upcoming events coming up for the rest of the school year. In arts and education, on June twelfth, we have Sweet Potato and Such for our first and second graders, and the Revolutionary Soldiers and Blacksmith Reenactment for our fourth graders. On June thirteenth, we have the Be True to Yourself Anti-Bullying for grades K through four, and on June fourteenth, we have the Ticosha Drummers for the third grade. Our spring fundraiser is this Saturday. We'll have our first-ever Pocket Book Bingo fundraiser, Saturday, June ninth, from six-thirty to nine-thirty PM. Costs us thirty-five dollars in advance and forty dollars at the door. This includes ten bingo games, we'll have raffles, a fifty-fifty raffle, and a cash bar. Some of our designer purses include Michael Kors, Coach, Kate Spade, Junian Burke, and Vera Bradley. Hope to see you there. The PVMS Community Barbecue is on Monday, June eleventh, during lunch periods from ten-ten to one-ten. Volunteers are needed to help set up, run games, and clean up. To sign up, please complete the Google form sent out via email and on Facebook. We also have our fourth-grade yearbook breakfast on Monday, June eighteenth, at eight o'clock AM in the elementary school auditorium. We invite all fourth graders, their parents, and teachers to attend. Yearbooks will be distributed, and students are encouraged to wear their fourth-grade spirit t-shirt, bagels and juice will be provided. We are looking for second and third-grade families to volunteer or submit donations for the fourth-grade Moving Up Ceremony on Tuesday, June nineteenth. We're asking second and third-grade families to volunteer, so that the fourth-grade families can enjoy the day with their students. Please complete the Google form to sign up. We have a fundraiser with the Hudson Valley Renegades. Join us on Thursday, June twenty-first, as the Renegades host the Vermont Lake Monsters at seven o'clock PM. The package is fourteen dollars and includes one ticket and one hat. Three dollars of every purchase goes back to the PVPTA. Purchase online at gadesgroup.com, password PV, and you can also find the flyer in your email and our Facebook page. Overall, we've had a really exciting year with our membership support. We've been able to provide many programs and events to our elementary school and middle school students, including grade-level events, arts and education events, teacher-appreciation lunches, purchasing Wonder and Augie and Me books for the entire middle school student body staff to support the One Book One School initiative, paying for the Starbridge Villa trip for the seventh graders, supporting the Medieval Times trip for sixth graders, the Three for Me volunteering program for elementary school teachers, the fourth-grade yearbook breakfast and Moving Up Ceremony reception, elementary school yearbooks, scholastic book fairs at the elementary and middle schools, guest speakers such as Katie Greer and Dan Turner, Holiday Reads and Dr. Seuss Reading Extravaganza, the middle school barbecue, middle school Red Ribbon Week events, elementary school and middle school pictures, our elementary school class parents program, and fundraising events such as the West Point Hockey Game, Renegades Baseball Game, and our Pocket Book Bingo. And that being said, we are looking for PTA Executive Board positions, including teacher liaison positions for the 2018-19 school year. Those who are interested can email us directly for more information. If you wanna purchase tickets or volunteer for any of the events mentioned tonight, or to volunteer for upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org, or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org, and like our Facebook page for more information. We wanna thank our administrators, teachers, volunteers, and membership for all their support this year. We wish everyone a great summer and look forward to seeing you back in the fall. Thank you.
Thanks.
For the community, the affair will be at the German American Club at six-thirty, yes, the Pocket Book Bingo.
I have to buy my ticket.
Present it.
Moving to the curriculum report, Dr. Luft?
Sure. I just wanna talk a little bit about some of the many exciting professional development and curriculum work activities going on over the summer. There was a tremendous amount of work that went into the planning and creation of these events, the building administrators, and department coordinators have been instrumental in designing curriculum-writing opportunities for the teachers. So I just wanted to cover some of the many that are being offered this summer. There's an IDE, student-driven classrooms, which works to help empower students to assume greater ownership over their learning, while helping them build some executive functioning skills. Self is holding a Sustainability Summer Institute at Manhattanville College. We had several teachers attend last year, and we're hoping more will this year. We've spoke a lot about the Innovative Classroom Academy. There's another program going on this summer emphasizing best practices of co-teaching models. The Teacher U programs are running the last week of, the week after school is out, and those programs, many of which are run by teachers for teachers. We have instructional technology implementation trainings going on, and curriculum writing going on in a variety of areas, including ELA and math alignment, science, social studies, world language departments revising curriculum, grade-level work, planning for the middle school advisory period, AIS program revisions across all buildings, health and wellness, including the Yale Ruler Implementation for Students, new course curriculum design, IB curriculum alignment, safety and security protocols, ELA Math Challenge Groups, AP regents, and IB course curriculum design, as well as a bunch of district initiatives, including freshman foundations, digital portfolio, unit lunch at the high school, and college essay writing. So I know there are certainly others, but I just wanted to acknowledge the many opportunities that exist for our teachers over the summer, and the hard work of the building principals, assistant principals, and other administrators across the district to designing and offering these programs. On a side note, I had the opportunity to participate in a shark tank today. I should've watched the show before walking in, but there was fifteen student groups presenting items all related to sustainability, or products all related to sustainability. They did a fabulous job of presenting the background knowledge of why they're, why they made it, and how it's gonna help others, and which of the sustainable goals it meets the need of. Thankfully, it was not real money, because my wife would not let me back in the house after how much I spent, but it was a great opportunity to see the students express themselves, and some of the students came up with really creative ideas. Myself, Mr. McCarty, and Jasper were three of the sharks, and then sometimes it got a little contentious as we were outbidding each other for rights for the students' products. I liked to ask students math questions, so when they wanted ten thousand dollars for fifteen percent share, I made them figure out, based upon their unit cost and how many they can create, how long it would take me to get my money back. So when they wanted $10,000 for 15% share, I made them figure out based upon their unit cost and how, how many they can create, how long it would take me to get my money back. That was met with some frowns, but they were able to figure it out. So it was a tremendous event. It was put on by the same teachers, Ms. Reese, Ms. Somer, and Ms. Sosa. And it was, it was a lot of fun. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Sounds great. Dr. Wills?
I'll start with Tech Center graduation, and I know that Ms. Palmerly was there. And Ms. Entieri was there, the principal?
No, just me. I was the only one from Putnam Valley.
Oh, because I thought she was gone.
Okay. So I was glad I was there.
I'm glad you were there. Yes.
1,450 students, not all ours.
No, and we had, um, do you want to read the names of the students who were there? Who were there?
Um, Eric Alfaro, Travis Anderson, Michaela Bertuzzi, Marissa Brown, Danielle Cappadici, Jacob Cooperman, Dylan Delaney, Alexis Delgado, Christian Lopez Ramos, Kelsey Murphy, Mackenzie Nichols, Aiona Powers, Nicholas Riordan, Caitlin Sigmund, Matthew Simpson, Maria Tomas, Rodolfo Viveros, and Karine Zastinchik. And I, I don't have the, the fields that they were, the technical fields that they were studying, but the assortment of, of courses and fields of study was, was amazing. And these, these students were spread out through all of the.
Yes.
Different program.
We have 60 or 70 each year, 70 students who attend BOSI's. And this is really a benefit to them in their lives. Many of them find the passion, something they really love to do. They go to excellent colleges from there. Again, taking the new knowledge that they have obtained and also careers.
Or start in the world of work.
Or start in the world of work.
And all of the student speakers talked about, again, that sort of welcoming attitude that they find when they get there, that, that, that the teachers are, are always available to them, support them, you know, and that's, that's what you want to hear.
And they, they also meet students from other schools with similar interests. So it's a way for our students to expand their communities and their affinity groups, things that they love to do and they do together with others. So, thank you very much.
That was great. Didn't rain.
During this week, we had undergraduate awards, which were presented by our principal, Ms. Entieri, at the high school. And this gives ninth, 10th, and 11th graders an opportunity to be recognized. We have our senior awards next week. But all of the students in their grade have the opportunity to see their students excel and be recognized for that excellence. And it's, it's something that motivates. It's something that brings the students together. They're very supportive of their peers. And of course, when they're applying to college, they have these awards that they can then present as part of what they've achieved in high school. We also, I also was able to attend some of the IB presentations that Ms. Entieri provided for ninth graders, who will be the first group of students at our high school to be afforded the opportunity to be involved in the international baccalaureate. Right. And we presented, she presented them with the schedule, that, what it would look like in their 11th and 12th grade because it is an 11th grade and 12th grade program, and a brochure that explains the program. And she and Mr. Mello described what this program was really about, which is really an international program that is, it distinguishes a student in a school where there is an IB program. And it's also inclusive because you can take the IB certificate programs as well as actually attempt to attain an IB diploma. So this is another great opportunity for our students coming up at our high school. There have also been a number of concerts and choral concerts at our schools. Again, very inspiring work, demonstrated, demonstrating excellence at all levels. There were, there was another science research competition at Somers Middle School, and we had 19 students who are sophomores, oh, who gained recognition. We had four first place winners. We had a number of second place winners and some third place winners out of 270 other sophomores. So 19 of our students.
Wow.
Were granted these awards. There are 270 sophomores from Duchess, Putnam, and Westchester Science Research Programs. So our students are excelling in this area as well.
Are there names on our website, Dr. Wills, somewhere? Or?
I'm not sure.
Not to read them now, but can we put them on our website just for recognition?
Yes, we can. Why don't I just mention them quickly?
Oh, sure.
Third place in engineering, Chris Sober. A third place, another third place in engineering, Kaiko Waters. Second place in medicine and health, Angelique Ordóñez. Second place medic, medicine and health, Sydney Goldberg. Second place behavior, Shannon Denizo. Second place biochemistry, Matthew Richards. Second place planetary science, Adam Emery. Second place cell and molecular science, Alex Waters. First place medicine and health, Shannon Lee. First place animal science, Marissa Back. First place bioinformatics, Karina Davis. And first place behavior, Michael Tompkins. So you can see there are a variety of programs and students who have attained excellence in their program, in their science research as sophomores. So they're, they're the first, this is their first year in the program.
Well, and I, just to go back to the academic awards that Ms. Entieri did at the high school this week. As a, as a teacher that had students in all of those grades, some of the ninth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders, one of the things that struck me the most was seeing the areas, academic areas that they were excelling in. And for about half of them, it was a surprise to me, being their former teacher. I would never have said that this child would get an award in English because he struggled with reading and writing in third or fourth grade. Or a student getting a, an award in, in science or in higher level math. And math had been, you know, was the one place that we had worked so hard and they had struggled. And, you know, talking to parents about like, wow, how surprised they were and how much our children change and grow and that we can't put them in like little neat rows and say, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna do math. You're great at math. You're gonna do something with math. Because maybe their real love is English and it just takes time for it to come around. I don't know. I was just really surprised and pleased with how much ex-students of mine changed and grew and found new passions. I, I just thought it was very exciting.
It is. And, and just going along with that report that you just gave our, Ms. Palmerly, we also had the seniors walk through the elementary school and middle school. And that is just an amazing experience with a lot of tears, a lot of emotion, as the students recognize teachers, teachers recognize students, and seeing that, you know, journey being completed. And this is the first year they also went to the middle school. And it was, it was just lovely to see the students walk through. There was a lot of sense of pride and, you know, achievement in, in a very good way at our schools. I, I wanted to mention something too about one of our students. A, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we had one of our students, Aleah Steele, do a presentation here on STEAM, her STEAM work. And she's continued that work. And she actually attempted to start an after-school club, which she was running in the STEAM area. And when she couldn't get a lot of students going to the club, what she did is she created with the help of, of the principal and actually Mr. Luff was involved and others, the idea of how about doing this program during lunch at the cafeteria. And so she set up a table at the cafeteria, and she was building electronic connections through Play-Doh, showing students how you could use a conductor and so on, and sculptor, and the conductor. And she had about 20 students or so around the table. It was very effective. And she's very, very, she has tremendous initiative in this field, still working in the STEAM field. And she also received a number of awards as well in her grade level, in her ninth grade level. But, you know, we are trying to give students opportunities to excel and to use their voices and their knowledge in our schools. Just, I wanted to make sure people realized we were doing a great deal of geothermal work. I don't know if you were able to get those photographs on the computer. Could you put them up there? I thought we'd show some of the work at our elementary school, the field. These were taken by drones by one of the companies working there. They shared it with us. They shared the photographs. Actually, it's Ms. Tompkins who is doing some subcontracting part of the work for ConEd. And so I'm not sure that everyone in the community is aware that our energy performance contract, again, we've talked about it a lot, but a lot of people, you know, may not know that we started the geothermal work there on the field next to the elementary school. And there's a lot of work being done, and we want to make sure that people know about that. We, this was a very, it's quite an extensive, extensive project to actually.
Where are they going to do the?
They're huge trucks and.
Where are they going to do the reenactment?
Oh, they're going to do the reenactment in the playfield.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead.
In the play, where the big toy, where the?
Uh, I don't know if they're going to do it there or in the lower field. I'm not sure which one. But they're doing it in another place. Because this, this was scheduled to be done after the reenactment. But if you remember, we had to move the reenactor.
Well, it'll be very authentic.
Because of the storm.
1776.
Because of the storm.
Isn't that sort of what it looked like?
Yeah.
I don't want to stand in the dirt.
The storm took away the opportunity to have it. You know, that storm had many, many.
Many ripples.
Uh, ripples.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've had trees that have fallen that we've had to have cut. We've cut more trees to make the school safer. It's been very challenging and things that were unexpected that we've had to do. But we've had tree service men, people at our school to make sure that we have a safe environment. But we wanted to show some of the geothermal work.
Just to note on that, our own technology department installed a time-lapse camera on one of the poles over by the district office. So it's actually been filming prior to when they originally tore up the turf there. So we'll be able to, at the completion of it, actually watch a time-lapse video showing from when the grass is originally down to when it's torn up, to when the wells are dug, to all the piping and everything. So when it, eventually the, the sod is laid back down over it. So it'll be very interesting to be able to see. And the real reason behind that is more so academic than anything else is members of our Sustainability Committee who are interested in using that as a resource for their teaching to have discussions with their students. So when I realized they came over the weekend and started, I got a little nervous. But then Mr. Lee actually confirmed that the camera was installed the Wednesday prior. And he actually already sent me a time-lapse video. It's just maybe 15 seconds long, showing them peeling up all of the grass that was there. So that'll be coming soon.
So we also received a safety report from the Altaris Company that is helping us with our assessing all of our schools for safety. And we were going, we're going to have a board report on that the first meeting in September. We're, in the meanwhile, we're doing an analysis of the work that we can do without costs, the work that we can do quickly. And it was interesting, there were no citations of work that needed to be done instantly. There was no immediate work that was required. All of the work can be done at a pace that allows us to discuss all of the issues with our staffs and begin to look. The, the kinds of things that were noted are things that really are very little cost that we can do. For example, at the middle school, we talked about how we can cover the windows with some, something innovative. Because in the classrooms in the middle school, it's harder to hide away. In the elementary school, we can find a place to hide when you're doing a lockdown. Things like that we are going to put into place. But there were no immediate issues. We were praised for having SROs who, in our schools, we were praised for our anonymous alert system, for our ID system. But there are things that need to be refined, and there are some suggestions for further work, which we are all going to be talking about with everyone. That's it. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention. We're working on, we're talking about diplomas. We're working on our district having a biliteracy seal on our diplomas. We're talking about diplomas. We have students who speak two languages very, very well. And New York State has just instituted this recently, this biliteracy seal. If you go through a certain process, a student can receive this on their diploma, which is another plus for them as they graduate with that biliteracy seal. So at our, Alexis Thornton is leading a committee that is going to be putting together all the work that we'll need to do in order to provide the seal. It requires a number of assessments in both languages, but it'll be another way to advantage our students who are bilingual.
Available for next year's graduating class?
There'll be some, a pilot for next year. And.
I was just going to say, I think the exciting piece about the seal of biliteracy is it offers an opportunity for some of our ENL students to really be celebrated for their biliteracy and be able to show proficiency in both their native language as well as the English language is one way in which they can earn the seal of biliteracy. English-speaking students, native English-speaking students could earn it as well by showing proficiency in a world language. But it's, it's, many of those students receive many other accolades. And we thought it was a really great opportunity to celebrate some of the diversity within Putnam Valley and to celebrate some of our ENL students. So as soon as that's up and running.
Are, are the number of languages limited or?
No.
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 Unlimited.
Okay.
Like we have some students who are, who speak Albanian.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, anything I'd like to open for public on agenda items only at this point?
I had a question about.
Go ahead.
The middle school schedule turning to pods for both sixth and seventh grade.
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth grade. That usually has a budget impact. Has that been figured into the plan for the pods?
So we were able to do it without making any changes to staffing. The one way we did that is by changing around how we perform our AIS services in the middle school. So math AIS and ELA AIS will be, some of it will be pull-out, some of it will be push-in, where the teachers will get to work with students. And we have more teachers, more of our actual math teachers performing math AIS as opposed to having a standalone dedicated teacher to math AIS. So that's how we were able to add a teacher to the sixth grade pods without increasing the number of teachers. We've actually, we're actually decreasing the number of teachers in the middle school even despite this with sharing between other buildings.
And I have one also. And it's, you know, when we listen to these presentations, I think everybody on the board listens with a lot of hats. Our parent hat, our educator hat, our taxpayer hat. And I was listening to the summer presentation about all the availability for the summer. And my taxpayer hat was saying, so are teachers getting paid for all that? And is there an approval process? So I don't necessarily want an answer now, but maybe at another presentation or as we look at negotiations next year. I really want to look at, I think we have to keep our teachers on the cutting edge. We need them to know the, the best information they need to be able to do half of what we've seen today. But there has to be some approval system. And I assume there is one. But I, I heard that loud and clear when I heard the litany of things that people can do in the summer.
I can give you a 10-second answer to that. So the answer is yes, they get paid for it. And it's a contractual, it's within their contract. And it's a tremendous opportunity for someone who sits in my seat to have teachers available to work on curriculum over the summer because it allows you to focus your work then as opposed to pulling them from the classroom throughout the school year. And this year, we completely revamped the approval process for summer curriculum work. In fact, it's no longer a teacher-initiated proposal. It was, we got teacher feedback through a survey. It was, we got teacher feedback through a survey and the building administrators really set their building priorities. They're scheduled almost like courses. And the teachers logged into my learning plan and chose from predetermined learning opportunities that were aligned to the teacher's feedback from the survey, but that were designed from the principal. So there is a great deal of accountability.
There's relevancy and accountability.
Very much so.
Great. Okay. That was 10 seconds. That was great.
It was more than 10 seconds, but it was short.
Okay.
Just to be accurate.
Let's, 10-ish seconds. Let's move, let's move on to new business. And we'll start off with number one, Mr. Farrar.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to continue the moratorium on approving the admission of non-resident children of professional staff who are not previously enrolled in the district schools during the 2017-18 school year. Siblings of those students currently enrolled in the district may attend with specific approval of the board and the payment of tuition.
Second.
Questions or comments? And we talked about this at more or less a couple of meetings ago. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved to grant permission for a non-resident faculty member's child who attended district schools in the 2017-18 school year to attend Putnam Valley High School, one child, for the 2018-19 school year without the payment of tuition as per the request in document number 213/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved to grant permission for a non-resident faculty member's children who attend, who attended district schools in the 2017-18 school year to attend Putnam Valley High School, two children, for the 2018-19 school year without the payment of tuition as per the request in document number 214/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve meeting dates for the Board of Education as per document 206/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is for next year and this is what we had up the week before.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, thank you.
Resolved on the recommendation, Superintendent Schools, authorize a tax collector to make revenue adjustments due to assessment reviews for the 2017, for 2017-18 as per document number 20818 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the first reading of policy 4770, graduation requirements and ceremonies as per document number 209/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to grant approval should an adult residing in the Putnam Valley Central School District and who is over the age of 18 make an application to the National External Diploma Program, NEDP, through the Yonkers Public Schools as a pathway to a high school equivalency diploma. It is understood that there is no cost to the district for this Board of Regents' recognized graduation pathway program.
Yes, so I, oh.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll explain that. We, we talked about some programs that we would offer here for diploma, but the Board of Regents also provided another pathway for adults to obtain a diploma. And the only school district in the area and the whole region in the Hudson Valley is Yonkers, so they're opening that. They have to open it to other school districts to just have the superintendent authorize that residents here can apply for this. It's an, it's an online program that they offer. They don't get our diploma. They get this national high school equivalency diploma.
And I assume that's for 18 to 21, I would imagine?
No, it's much older. Just as, over 18. Anyone of 50, 60, 80.
I'm sorry. That is great.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent schools to enter into agreement with the University of Albany and the high school as per document 215/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is, I'm sorry. This is the program that allows our students in science research to get 12 credits from SUNY Albany and, you know, any other type of program that we use from SUNY Albany in our schools.
Basically, it carries a step forward from that also. Our teachers become like adjunct professors or faculty members up there. And it's a joint program. They review us, they help us, and it's a cooperative program between both organizations.
That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve items 2 through 17 as appears within the consent agenda section of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? This is a long list, Mr. Cohen.
Oh, you want me to go through it then? We're approving an educational contract with the Mayfair Pack School District for one of our students who gets services there. We're approving consulting agreement with Career Support Solutions to provide speech and language services. And for one of our students. We're approving a bunch of budget transfers to help with the pump station at the middle school, to replace the phone system district-wide, to furnish the high school library with new learning space, to transfer, to fix the well and the pump system at the, that was damaged at the elementary school for tax surcharge area, we're approving. We're approving three days without pay for two employees. We're approving additional hours for C staff members who will work with our special needs children at the Conic Outdoor Center. We're approving hours for CSE, CPSE chairperson so that person can finalize the IEPs for our students. We're approving, oops. I lost my notes. We're in trouble.
We're proving a lot of stuff.
We're approving...
Get summer workers?
Wait, just give me a second. Yes. I hear it. It came back. Uh, we're proving up to 80 hours for one of our teachers, which is being paid by a federal grant. We're proving additional hours for our social studies staff to grade the transition global history regions. We're proving hours for Mr. Coleman who was here to work on the in-service math workshops for grades one to eight. We're approving a CSE member to attend the superintendent's conference day in June. We're proving additional hours for our science research coordinator so he can support our science students who are in these competitions, which you heard about the 10th graders who were in. We're proving three additional summer workers. We're proving the district selling of, or auctioning off our OTVs and our outdated equipment, electronic equipment. We're approving the advisors for the elementary school Little Explorers Club. We're approving an overnight trip for one of our students who is participating in the state track and field. She qualified, Nina, Nina G...
Gavan.
Gavan. She qualified up, and she's up in the States. We're proving additional hours for our school, school nurses. And we're proving in-service credits for two staff members.
That is a mouthful. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, if I could, that Naya Gavan left today with a, the fire trucks and the schools outside. She's an eighth grader on varsity track. And she is remarkable in what she can do, her accomplishments. And we had quite an outpouring to wish her well.
Okay, do I get to open it up to public contribution on anything?
Just for a little clarity on the science research program we talked about, we, we heard about the 10th graders. It's a three-year program.
Yes.
And this will continue. And I've been very fortunate to sit next to our young scientists here who went on to not only win the States there, but went on to the Intel Nationals.
Right, international, right.
Okay, public invited to speak on anything? Oh, good.
My name is Dorothy France. I'm here as a citizen. I've lived in Putnam Valley for 17 years. And I'm inspired to be here somewhat by the science research presentations of the recent weeks. My son was involved in that. I'm also inspired by the sustainability movement that we're doing here and all of the construction over at the elementary school. And I'm also inspired, in a very good way, by the graduation walk at the elementary school. And my middle school-aged daughter coming home and telling me how excited she was to see the science researchers that she recognized walking the hallways of the elementary school. And I'm here to talk about something that makes me really uncomfortable and I apologize in advance for the downer that it's going to bring here and for the lack of technology in my presentation. Well, it's not really a presentation. But I'm here to talk about the cell phone tower that has been leased to be built less than a mile from the elementary school and about 200 feet from my house, but that's a separate issue. It's less than a mile from the elementary school. And I understand that the science on the safety of this kind of a thing in the proximity to an elementary school is inconclusive. And I spent a lot of time looking at science this weekend and looking at how so much of it is inconclusive and yet it's moving in the direction of being conclusive. And so I don't know how it happened exactly that the cell phone tower got to be leased to be built so close to our school. I think politics and business and lawyers were involved in having it happen. I don't think there was any engagement of parents and children or the school district. Maybe there was. But I'm just here to express my concern as a taxpayer and as someone who works really closely with the young children, the youngest children in our school district. The science about the safety of this kind of technology in proximity to a school or to anyone is really inconclusive. But there is a lot of research coming up showing the, that it is linked to cancer, that it's linked to sleep disturbances, that it's linked to children not being able to pay attention for extended periods of time. And it's linked to anxiety. And it's not just me that's talking about this. It's not just Putnam Valley. It's happening all over the country that, that citizens are coming forward, looking for help from institutions that are caregiving institutions and not necessarily money-making institutions. But private citizens looking for help from caregiving institutions and community institutions in fighting this trend. It's happening across the country. It's happening across Putnam County. Districts nearby are shutting down these towers left and right. And I'm just thinking from the perspective of someone who sees our youngest children. And I look at the incoming kindergartners in our elementary school and I think in 10 years, they're going to be doing science research. And they might be researching the effects of technology, that the effects of a cell phone tower on the body. And, and they'll look across the geothermal field, which will be a soccer field again, and they'll see a 16-story cell phone tower. And they might ask, how did that get there? What were my grown-ups thinking when they let that happen? And that really concerns me. Or they might be sick, or there might be an attention issue among them. And then I think about those kids when they get to middle school and they're doing the sustainability projects and they're thinking about the sustainability of the world around them. And I wonder, when are they, they're going to ask, how did this happen in my town? And where were the adults who were responsible for my safety and for my environment when this was happening? And I think it's something that, that I'm asking you all as citizens and as the people who are charged with being responsible for the safety into the future of this school district. I'm asking you all to engage with the discussion or to at least look into it a little bit and, and consider the, the future in terms of our children. I'm sorry. I, I think about how my middle school children have recently been in health class. They're talking about keeping their phones away from them. They're talking about being off-screen for significant periods of time. The next jump is to the larger pieces of this technology. And, and I also want to say that, you know, my house is right near the tower. Literally, my son's bedroom window is going to be probably the exit of the cafeteria. And that's a problem, you know. I'll figure out what I can do about that. I can sell my house. Of course, the research about property values and the proximity of a cell phone tower is also inconclusive at this time. And there's all sorts of protective gear that's available now that, that citizens can use to protect themselves from this. I wonder what it'll look like in 10 years. But I can move. I can sell my house. I can buy the equipment, whatever. We can't move an elementary school. And having our school, our school is less than a mile from the proposed site of this district. There is no other tower closer to our school. We're setting a precedent that it's okay to invade our sacred educational space with things that are potentially dangerous. And so I ask you to please consider this in, as this process moves forward. There is a petition being circulated by a number of citizens. I've had engagement with 57 people in the last couple of days about this petition and I've only had one person not sign it. So I, there, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine, did we do the minutes at the beginning of the meeting? Did we approve minutes from the previous meeting?
It was not under the agenda.
It was removed, it was removed.
Oh, it was removed, yeah.
It was removed, it was removed.
Okay, yeah. I don't, I almost, I almost said it and then I wrote down. Okay. Yeah, it is. All right, any, anything else from the board? All right, at this point, I like, resolved to convene an executive session for eight matters of the employment history of eight particular persons. After which time, no further, oh, and I want to add, I'm sorry, one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time, no further business will be conducted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. And we have one more meeting before the school year ends, right now.
Twenty-first.